All right, I'm going, oh, fact TV, ready, okay, good. All right, I'm gonna call to order the county council meeting on September 24th at 7:30. First up is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
(inaudible) United States America, into your body for what it stands, for our nation, under God, and invisible, with the reading of justice for all.
Pro please.
Alder Roda Frada, Alder Barr, Alder Clouter, Alder Crowsey, Alder Rice is absent with excuse, Mayor Richardson, Alder Schroeder, Alder Scott, Alder Strasman. You have a call?
All right, thank you. All right, first up is welcome appearances, non-agenda items, which we'll have anything for that, but also some new appointments. First up is Susan Easterday for Parks. If you wanna just, yeah, come up to the mic and maybe just tell us a little bit about your interest in parks and who you are, and if there's questions, we can ask questions after that.
Hi, I am Susan Easterday, 2731 Osmondson Road in the Wildwood neighborhood. I'm a registered nurse by training, and my interest in parks and the prairie restorations, the natural world is just self-taught over a lifetime. And Dan Barr and Julia also know from things they've helped us do in the Wildwood area that we've got a small group of neighbors who are interested in taking care of our park. We've done some things in the Wildwood kettle behind the fire station, added some native plants there. So that's a big interest and the recreation end of it, I didn't put it in my application because it was a lifetime ago, but in 1986, I was on the City of Cedarburg Parks and Recreation Commission, just to fill out like a year's term. So I have just a little bit of background of a community that was a lot like Mayberry. There was a lot of participation, kids, in the programs, and I just saw this morning on a news program, a study about the drop-off in kids' participation since that era to now because of kids being stuck inside. So I'm looking forward to learning about the recreation end of things as it pertains to parks in the future.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Susan, Tom?
Sue, thanks for serving, but I do have a question for you in reference to, I guess, I was on Parks at the time, and I wanna clarify this, because you had come to a number, a number of city council meetings criticizing the Parks Department, criticizing the city council, and it had to do with the Magaw plan. Now, I just wanna make it clear, the plan wasn't to be changed, but it was to be phased in. That's all it was. And you were here with another gentleman, and the situation is, is I just wanna make it clear to you that now the Parks Board can change, I'm not there now, but the fact is, is it was to be phased in, that was all along, not to throw it out with the water, not to throw it and change it, but just do it in sections to see how it goes. And I was adamant about that, that's the key right there, was to see how it goes, because there was a lot of trees removed, there was a lot of foliage removed, and I wasn't real, you know, we were just trying to take a, we were trying to walk before we run. I just wanna bring that to your attention, and I want you to comment on that, what I just stated, because you came time after time after time to these, to the city council and talked to us about this, and I just was wondering what you were thinking about it now.
When I came to the meetings, the first meeting I came to is when I met the gentleman who spoke when I spoke. We had never seen each other in our lives, so I, I came, and my recollection from my own comments was speaking to each time, the need to be aggressive in working on the invasive plants. So from my perspective, having seemed to have moved to various homes over my lifetime, and there they always were lurking, you know, and coming into the yard or property, that there isn't a way to do it in half-measures. And so there were citizens living nearby that had more concerns, and I get that, because the reason people like the invasive buckthorn is it, it is an absolute wall, impenetrable. If you've got it on your lot line and you don't want to see your neighbors, you won't see your neighbors. It's actually how it made its way into this country from England, the buckthorn, it was a hedgerows. So I'm not connected to anything the other person said. We did work together on trying to get information out, and if I said anything that was inaccurate, that I would have to apologize for, I think in the end, it was approved to do things in phases, I think Scott Endel kinda brought that up as things were moving along and however that's going now. I haven't seen anything in the paper about it.
All right, I have Julia next, and then Dan.
So, thank you, Sue. We have been working for a couple of years, meetings sometimes, I know that your passion for the parks, I know that you are working to remove all the invasive species, so I want to thank you for that, and you are, this summer you're working on other project with the mosquito, and, you know, so I think that, you know, you really enjoy and dedicate a lot of time to the parks, so, you know, I'm happy to see that you are, you know, you're coming forward with this.
Okay.
Dan?
Yeah, so, that's on. So we worked on, you know, Sue's done a lot of nice things for Wildwood, the Wildwood neighborhood, she's the president of the Wildwood neighborhood. She also was involved in just south of Lacy Road with the improvement and removing invasives and planting various plants in the kettle area, right by the fire station there. But she's very knowledgeable on the parks, the Wildwood Park, we're getting the roof fixed on the Wildwood Park, it's gonna be done, I think next budget though, one more year, it's in. But we're making a lot of progress in the neighborhood, and she also keeps the citizens over there in Wildwood very informed on a variety of issues, she's not a one-issue person, she's very passionate about invasive species, but also when it comes to parks, when it comes to neighborhood issues, you know, she keeps residents informed and is a very active civic-minded person, and so pleased to see her come forward and, you know, you'll do a good work, I'm sure, for the citizens.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just thank you for serving, I'm excited for you to be on Parks. I think invasives is something that people are passionate about, and I, I do remember you coming forward for the Parks meetings in the past, and I just, I'm excited for you to be on.
All right, anyone else? All right, and all in favor of approving Sue, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Jake Johnson, for Board of Review, the second alternate position. And this is a resident moved out of the city, so that's why we're replacing that person. Hello, who are you?
Hello, my name is Jake Johnson, I live at 2617 Targi Street here in Pittsburgh, been there for 11 years now.
All right, any questions at all? Board of Review looks at, you know, the assessments, and when people contest them, they hear those disagreements and make decisions on those. It's the alternate position, so don't always need those, but any questions at all for Jake? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Thanks Jake.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, anything that anyone wants to remove from consent agenda? Ann?
Actually, there's a mistake in the minutes.
Oh, all right. What was the error?
Well, I read the minutes, my name was not listed on the attendees.
Oh, boy. Please, please add Ann to list of attendees.
Thank you. That's all.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor of approving as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, consent agenda is approved, I believe next is administrator's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Several items, I'll just touch on them and then be happy to answer any questions you have. Tomorrow, we have staff from the Economic Development Department that'll be attending the WIDA Housing Conference, and that's at Monona Terrace all day tomorrow. Secondly, on September 28th, that Saturday, Madison College, the South Goodman Campus right there at Park Street will be having their grand opening, that's at, from noon to four, with the ceremony at 1:00 PM. I know the mayor will be attended and attending, and a few staff people also. That is Saturday, September 28th, so this is Saturday. Wednesday, October 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:30 PM, is the Open Roads Ahead, that's the Verona Road event that will open the overpass officially, that begins at 4:00 PM, or I have four and then five to eight, so, maybe the ceremony at five, at four?
Yeah, I think the ceremony's around then, and the celebration at, I think it's at the bank.
Yeah, the celebrations at Wisconsin Bank and Trust from 5:00 to 8:00.
And I believe also that day, the roundabout at Nesbit will be open, is that right?
It will be, I have that on my list too, the net, oh, that's fine. The roundabout's scheduled to be open on schedule, and they're doing, actually gonna be doing pave, paving tomorrow at that roundabout, so it looks as though we will have that road open, and I, in all my years of doing this type of work, I've never had so many phone calls on a road in my life, but, so it'll be good to have that done. Next, Thursday, October 10th, is the Dane County Housing Summit, that's at Monona Terrace, if anyone's interested in attending, let myself or Mike Zimmerman know. Thursday, October 10th, is also the Terravessa Groundbreaking at 4:30 PM. Friday, October 11th, is the Phoenix Grand Opening and Ribbon Cutting, and that's gonna be at the corner of East Cheryl Parkway and the Lacy Roundabout. That grand opening will run from 2:00 to 5:00, so I assume that the formal ribbon, ribbon cutting will follow shortly after 2:00 PM. And then lastly, the Fitchrona, I'm sorry, the Pittsburgh Business Appreciation Lunch is gonna be on Tuesday, October 29th, from 11:30 to 1:15, you all should've received invitations in the mail, so please make sure you RSVP for those events. And then, I'm sorry, one last thing, next Tuesday and Wednesday, you're all invited to the Finance Committee Presentations of our budget, the various department heads will be presenting right here in these chambers, their various budgets, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to Plan Commission, Tom, anything for Plan Commission? We haven't met, so, nothing, all right. Public Works, Dan?
Motion to approve Resolution R. 160-19, excuse me, a resolution to authorize the rejection of the burden on rebid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Ann, and so did Public, what did Public Works do then?
They are gonna authorize to reject the bids that have come forward.
All right, what did Finance do?
Same.
Same, all right, what's going on?
So, I think the bids that have come, and this is the second time it's been out to bid, and the bids have been as much as three times as much as what has been budgeted, and so they're reconsidering the project, working with Dane County, Dane County is interested in providing a grant with some consideration for the design, they'd like to have some input on the design, but also we're looking at cost efficiencies in terms of reducing the cost of the project, and then we're gonna reevaluate and send it out for bid perhaps next year.
All right, do we have anything?
No, well, the only other thing I'd like to add is there was only one bid this last time, so we generally reject single bids.
Yep.
All right, any questions at all on this one? All right, seeing none, then we can go ahead and vote, so this is a weird one, where an aye vote is actually rejecting, so an aye vote is a, really a no vote, that's a little bit weird, but all in favor of rejecting, say aye.
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 And then you wanna oppose rejection, say nay. All right, and that is approved, or to reject. Anything else in Public Works, Dan? Nothing else, good, all right. Park Commission, Sarah?
Yes, sorry, so, we haven't had a meeting since the last council meeting, but I was able to watch the meeting, and so just as an FYI, the path was completed off of Noble Drive, and Scott Endel also gave an update that the easement connecting North Park residents to Magaw was just kind of discussed within the meeting, but I know last council meeting, we kind of brought up the sound amplification, and that is on the agenda for our next meeting on 10/3, and that's it.
I know that they've been doing a lot of grading of the new Magaw Park section as well, so they're getting that prepped for seating and, so we can use that next year. All right, Library Board, Ann?
Recommend that we pass Resolution R. 155-19, that is, Resolution requesting exemption from county library tax.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Dan, and the Library Board approves?
Yes, this is an annual resolution to exempt the city of Pittsburgh from the Dane County library tax. Now that we're providing library services to city residents, we no longer need to pay the county to provide services. Back in the day before, we had a library, we were paying them in the neighborhood of a million dollars a year.
Wow, okay, did Finance also approve this?
Correct.
All right, good. Any questions at all? Everyone's in favor of saving the million dollars, it sounds like? Good? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else for Library Board?
Our next meeting is October 16th, at 5:30 at the library.
Great. Commission and Agent Wild, Dorothy?
Thank you. Successful Labor Day fundraiser, Ice Cream Social at Apple Garden raised about $900 for the Friends Program. They want to remind people that they've got a number of really interesting trips planned, including some out of the country for seniors and people. They have no new budget proposals coming in, so they're going to go light on our upcoming negotiations, and they wanna say thanks again for honoring them for Senior Month in September. And then our next meeting is on October 10.
Great. Any questions? Seeing none, RCC?
We just had our meeting regarding the Pelletary Agenda Item for this evening, so nothing else pending at this time.
All right, do you wanna do a motion for the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I had to make the motion, yes. So, sorry, I don't know how to do this, because the RCC Commission would like to see this resolution changed, that we don't, unfortunately don't agree with the staff recommendation regarding bulk item pickup, and this was kind of brought back, it was at the last council meeting, and then Finance asked us to review it again.
Why don't you move to approve, but then?
We'll have a discussion, okay, so.
You can just discuss it a little bit, you can amend it.
Okay, so I'll move to approve Resolution R. 152-19, approving the agreement with Pelletary for the 2020 to 2024 waste and recycling contract.
All right, is there a second? Taken by Julia, and so you said RCC, some changes?
Yes, sorry, so RCC, for the changes that were proposed within this year, detailing kind of out what staff had recommended, so for recycling, they've requested that we move from unlimited recycling to limited recycling, which RCC is aligned with, because there are alternative options that residents could use, including larger bins, using the cardboard drop, drop-off, and the polystyrene drop-off options that are available. They also support having the staff recommendation of changing the brush from 14 pickups to 12. Claudia did a great job of giving us actual usage reports on the participation of brush pickup, so RCC definitely supports that, we think that the calendar could be updated to make that change clear. The only change that the RCC would like to discuss and amend is the bulk pickup item. We were unanimous, just kind of as a concern, that if we incur, if we add these two bulk pickups, one, we're increasing the cost of residents, communicating it to residents seems kind of confusing, that there's just these two pickups, and we're not a community like Madison that has a standard move-in, move-out day of August 14th, 14th, kind of with these apartments, we're having apartments move in throughout the year, so we think communication would be an issue. We're also just really concerned from a recycling perspective, that it will be a lot easier for, or a lot easier for residents to just kind of have items go to the landfill, rather than pursuing alternatives of selling items or donating, so we would like to remove that from the staff recommendation, that, the two bulk pickups in particular.
All right, what did Public Works do, Dan?
Passed it with the staff recommendations.
So you had the?
There's the two bulk pickups are in with Public Works.
All right, and what about Finance?
You talk, excuse me, so what we did in Finance is we removed the two bulk pickups, the justification for that is, we already do have bulk pickup year-round, once a week. Now, under the proposal from the staff, you would pay $9 per citizen, or per household, per household, per household, $9 per household, and there'd be two sweeps of the city per year, once in, on October 4th, and once again at the beginning of May. And then you pay the $9, but regardless of, I mean, everyone pays the $9, but you may not use the service. If, you know, you don't have these two bulk pickups, you can call Pelletary and have your item picked up, but it may be an upcharge of like $30, $35 or $40, I think that's fair, you know, look, I mean, first off, if I, if I do that, they come once a week, and so if I go with the sweeps that everyone pays for, for $9, it only comes twice a year, if my dryer goes down in November, it's not gonna be picked up till April, and everyone in the city's paying for it, I might as well just call them and have them come the next week and pay 30 bucks or whatever it would be for the, roughly that amount she mentioned. I think that's more fair, I think it makes more sense than to have something sit there for six months or whatever, five months, and that's what we decided. In addition to that, so, but there's still, if you'd like, you have the nine, so we have bulk pickup regardless, you have the two sweeps per year, which they added, which we took out. In addition to that, you can still call Pelletary if you wish, and have it picked up the next week, despite the two sweeps of the city anyway, if the upcharge is available, but the two sweeps are there at $9 per person, or per residence anyway, if you choose to go with that option. The other option we did is we added back in, the two, the Finance did, added back in the two brush pickups, it went from 12, 14 to 12, we went back to 14, and then we also added in the unlimited recycling, we are the recycling capital of Wisconsin, so we, you know, and also it's $350.50 per bag, residents are already taxed a lot, and so we looked at that, if you're, if you're gonna tax people like this, and then all of a sudden they gotta go get another bag for the recycling, it seems kind of, it's like, you know, we can, we can do it, we can make it work.
Danielle, Tim, you have, that you're open to answering questions, do you wanna speak at all? All right, they're available if you, we have questions for them, Julia?
I have a question about one of the two books that we said that, I don't understand that the city already has, I am confused, because I don't, what are they, one that recycle, that they do every year here for electronic?
No, the, the two bulk item pickups would be like two times a year, where you could put everything out by the curb that was not electric, oh, I mean, you can't put TVs or refrigerators out, but you could put, let's say you were moving out of a house, you could put couches and other large bulky items that wouldn't normally, you normally wouldn't throw out on a weekly basis, so that would be done twice a year. RCC and Finance both requested that that be removed from the contract.
No, I understand the part, but I don't understand the part that he said that we already has one.
Yeah, you can, currently, if a resident has some bulky items they need picked up, they can call Pelletary.
No, I know, I have done that, but they charge you.
Yes, and you're charged for.
It's pretty expensive, I have done that in the past, but I thought that you, I see that you mentioned that we already have those included in this.
They're not, they're not included in the budget.
No, but you mentioned that we already have one, so this is why I'm confused, I don't know you.
I think the way he said it was a little confusing, he just said, you have the opportunity to have bulk pickup.
Yeah, I know.
But there is the upcharge, so there's not an included thing, so.
Yeah, okay, you have to pay for that.
Yep, yep. All right, other questions, comments? Dorothy?
I used to, people don't know this, I used to run the Madison Freecycle Program back in its heyday, and we would get like up to 200 posts a day for people looking for someone to take something that still has some value. So I am a very strong proponent of trying to pass things down to people who could make continued use of it rather than landfilling it. On the county level, we're talking about approaching the end of the landfill's life and having to look for new land for a landfill, imagine that discussion. I prefer to recycle and reuse and re-home and all kinds of re-things before we take it to landfill. So I prefer to encourage residents to find ways other than putting it out on the curb. The only good thing about putting it out on the curb, particularly since the people who like to do curb shopping would be aware of it, is the opportunity for others to go pick things up, but sometimes that leads to messes and things that they know all too well about. So I'm kinda torn somewhat both ways, but I think I would probably tend more to vote to not do a scheduled bulk.
All right, Ann, did you have your entries?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the bulk pickup, we just have too much bulk junk sitting on our curbs all the time, and I know it's renters, and they don't always come and go at the October and May times, but we have garbage that sits out, we have mattresses, we have couches, we have stuffed chairs, we have stuff sits out on the curb for weeks at a time. We had last winter a mattress that sat out for the entire winter, one winter we had a couch that sat out for the entire winter, and, and I figured it out, the $9 comes to 75 cents a month, it's not very much, and, and if you wanna talk about that, I have weeks, months, well, you know, like, we only have two pickups for recycles twice a month, and there are times I don't put my recycle bin out, but I still pay for that, and the same thing with my garbage, there are weeks I don't put my garbage can out, it's, it's not got enough stuff in it, but I still pay for that, so I don't think really people need to nitpick about 75 cents a month.
Sarah, and then Dorothy.
I definitely agree, I don't think the cost is unsurmountable, I just, I am worried about, I know when Finance brought it back to RCC, the points of contention were confusion, where we talked about how we would update the schedule and try to highlight those dates, but I just can't help but imagine that I, I don't know if it will alleviate any of those concerns of having trash on the side, just 'cause I don't know if we're going to, I don't know if people are going to know that these two dates exist, and if it's going to work with their schedule, if they're moving in or moving out, that I just, I, I could be wrong, but I guess I still think that that problem will, would exist, and I just, the landfill aspect is really, like I said, the RCC was definitely unanimous in wanting this removed, just because a lot of times, it is, it's very easy to just put it out on the curb, but like Dorothy mentioned, there are other options of the, just to try to get as much use out of items as possible, that I know St. Venise will even come and pick things up if you want, just if it's in good shape, so there are options available to have things reused, and it would be great if, we are the recycling capital, recycling includes reusing, that we could encourage that. And just one other point then for the Finance of being against or bumping the 12 up back up to the 14 for the brush, we weren't, this one wasn't as contentious, it just kind of from the data, which I, I thought Claudia's data was fantastic, where just kind of showing that six of the 14 pickups have less than 10%, so I don't know if removing those two just as a cost savings measure from, which I know it's just $2.58, but I don't know if residents would feel it that much, just because the participation is pretty low some of the weeks, like 14 pickups is, is quite a bit, and when six of the 14 pickups have less than 10%, that's, seems like a smaller audience group that we're impacting.
Dorothy?
I wanted to clarify for Ann particularly, the free bulk pickup is talking about twice a year, not, not talking about, and it's landlord's responsibility at apartments, if they have people clearing out, landlords have to either make sure they take all that stuff along with them, or landlords are going to pick up the cost of that special pickup for it. So whether we have two bulk pickups or not is not going to end people throwing stuff. One of the things that I end up feeling bad about is when people... One of the things that I end up feeling bad about is when people dump stuff on someone else's lawn and that property owner becomes responsible for dealing with it. And it's Jack that has to knock on the door and contact property owners, say, "Hey, you're going to have to take care of this." I feel bad for him at times, but that's kind of the way it is.
Julia?
So I, you know, the option to, from the two pickup is great, you know, it's convenient, but I understand the impact in the environment, you know, in the landfill, so, you know, so this is what I say, I would say no, because I am conscious about our environment and how we need to, you know, protect, and this, we are creating a bigger problem doing this. It's, you know, the idea is great, it's convenient. I have used Pelletary to pick up big stuff from my house, and I know that it could be expensive. The other thing regarding the twelve, the twelve to fourteen, you know, what I see is like during fall time, sometime in, it feel like when the leaves start falling up, we start, especially people that we have big, in my district, that we have a lot of tree, sometime, you know, we are missing another pickup in November. You know what I mean? And because the...
Another one in brush?
Oh, God, what a brush. But we are missing another one brush in November. And we talk about that. I don't know what is the, if we can move it a little bit more, you know, at the end of November, because I see like most of the leaf start falling up at the end now, and then we have all our bags, and sometime I had to, I've seen people leaving during the winter time, because they don't know, so...
Pat, you want to?
Yeah, and to that point, a lot, a lot depends on the snowfall and things like that. If we get a early November snowfall, that, those leaves are covered all year, so that's why we sort of push that up.
But sometime you have it in bags already sitting there in the curb and, you know...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very tricky.
I know. It has been tricky in the late couple of years, yeah.
So, Dan?
Oh, yeah. On the bulk pickup issue, you know, if, if the nine dollars would cover a pickup at every week, now you pay more every week, obviously, currently. You got to pay like thirty-five bucks as opposed to the nine, which is a fee assessed. But if that were, if they came every week, that would address some of the concerns you mentioned with stuff sitting all winter. Just twice a year, I don't know if it has that much impact. And I agree, I really think that the space in the landfill is a problem. You know, we want to encourage people to kind of, you know, find alternative means, you know. I work with MRFs and county landfills. Space is a problem. We want to try and reduce that.
So would someone like to make an amendment? Sarah?
I would make an amendment to approve resolution, sorry, let me reverse, reverse here, R. 15219, approving the agreement with Pelletary with all of the staff recommendations except for the addition of the bulk pickup.
So your, so your amendment is to remove the bulk pickup from the current motion?
Yes, that makes a lot more sense. Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, second by Julia. So we're discussing the amendment to the motion, which is to remove the two bulk pickups. Any further, Dorothy?
I'm looking at Tom's eyebrows. What that would be voting on would be the reduced number of brush pickups.
That, that would have to be a separate amendment. So right now, it's just the...
The bulk.
Yeah, so we can do that separately. Right now, we're talking about, yeah, we'll do a separate one. Further discussion on removing the two bulk pickups. All right, so this is just voting on removing the two bulk pickups right now. So it's just amending the main motion. So say aye if you'd like to remove the two bulk pickups?
Aye.
Aye. And say nay if you'd like to keep them in.
Nay.
All right, then my estimation, the ayes won on that one. So it's now remove the two bulk pickups. Is there another amendment that someone like to make to the motion?
I'm going to make a motion to add, go from twelve to fourteen brush pickups.
Okay.
To go to fourteen?
We're going to fourteen. Where was it? We're going to fourteen. The staff is recommending to reduce it to twelve. The current, the current main motion calls for twelve. I want to keep it at fourteen.
Oh, I second.
All right, Julia, second that. All right. Dorothy, discussion?
In meetings that I listen to, what I got was a rationale for reducing it from fourteen to twelve was to make more, make more money, spend less money, to be able to better afford to do the bulk pickups. So if we're taking off the bulk pickups, the reason, or at least a good share of the reason for reducing from fourteen to twelve goes away.
All right. Sarah?
I do know that they said that the cost of recycling has increased though, too. And so it was an effort to remove those brush pickups, just to try to counteract that increased cost that we're experiencing from recycling as well, though. So it wasn't just, it wasn't a one for one. Without a doubt, it was kind of to counteract the increase in costs we're experiencing from just vendors having more expenses on their end from recycling.
Tom?
Can I ask?
Oh, I had Tom, and then I thought it was next. Go ahead, Tom.
Is Julia talking?
She's next. I got you.
That's the type of guy I, I'll yield to her. She can talk.
All right, Julia.
No, my, my question is because I would say that people are used to have it fourteen, you know? So if we reduce it to twelve, we need to also, we have to spend time to notify them that, because, believe me, there are a lot of people that use it, you know? And I can see it in my district, people use it a lot. And people, you know, and so if we're going to twelve, we need to do also outreach to the public and say why we decided to go to twelve, you know, because they are used to the fourteen. So it's, you know, I, you know, that's it. This is my comment.
Tom?
What happened in finances, we, we discussed, obviously, we discussed both this and we had some questions, just to let you know from the beginning, in reference to this waste pickup, I'll say. So we sent it back to RCC, but it was all in good taste, I thought. It was nothing, we just had questions that we didn't have answers for. As far as what's in front of us now, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what's in front of us is keeping it the same. In reference to brush, and if you have recycling, you like to add a bag or whatever it is, you could do that. Let's talk about the brush. I don't know about you, but my district too, like Julia's, it's very important. The brush pickups are important to people. Let me tell you what's important to people is, you all know, you all know. You know, police, fire, roads, and trash. You start messing with trash and you're in trouble. Because you can't tell people when to trim the trumps. You can't tell them when to put stuff outside. You can't tell them what they should put at the curb if they're trimming. In my neighborhood, they're trimming all the time. And you know what? I want them to keep my property value up. That was a joke. That was a joke. You know, I want them to do that. But to reduce that is not the direction you want to go. Because you're actually saying, "No, we're not giving you as many pickups now." And the same thing with recycling. The recycling, remember, gee, we're the recycling capital of the world where we had the little containers.
We were, three of them, yeah.
You know?
Green, yellow.
I don't want to tell you how old we are here. But, yeah, I can remember that. But the thing is, there is, people are used to it. People are doing it. And if they, if they came here and filled this arena tonight, I bet they'd tell you the same thing. Leave it alone. Government, get out of our way. That's my comment.
All right. Anything further? All right, then let's vote on, oh, sorry, Sarah?
Sorry, just one thing. I wholeheartedly understand that we do not want to take away services, but just to be clear, for the data, looking at that, and hopefully we can make decisions driven by data, for 2018, so there were two pickups in April and two pickups in October, for one of those pickups in each of those months, their, the participation was three percent. So I don't mean to take away services, but I just think, when we look at it, it's really, it's not being used in certain months. And I think that we could probably use this, that they have historical information back to 2014, that there's probably months where people just aren't getting to it yet, that April maybe seems to be a little early. October maybe seems to be a little late, that if there's, or around holidays, that I just think if we're, I don't mean to take away services, wholeheartedly agree that that is important, but just that it seems as though people aren't using them as often as it is listed, that's all.
I have Julia.
Yeah, I agree with you that we need to look at data, but maybe if we are planning to do that, maybe we need to do it next year and tell people that if we are not going to have, or show the people, show this information that we have shared with the people, and say, "If we don't have this collection or this percentage, we don't increase, and maybe next year, or maybe when we had to renew the contract again, we can reconsider." You know what I mean? I don't know, something like that.
This is a four-year contract, so we have to wait a number of years.
Okay, okay.
We couldn't change the next year, but...
But you know what I mean? So maybe we can, we can share this information with the public and then maybe they're, okay. Because I want to tell you, the conversation that we have in my block during summertime is when they're coming. Because it's like people are ready, you know? So we use it a lot in some areas, so...
Tom, did you want to follow up?
The only thing I can watch your head on is like the three percent. Don't hang your head on that, because you can't, because you can't tell home, Pelletary could go through the neighborhood and it's light. It's three percent. It's light. But maybe the next time or the next year, it's, it's a lot heavier. How can you tell people? You can't tell people when to clean their yard, when to trim their bushes, when to do this. They could have gone by and the time they did it was low. And I agree with that. I agree, it could have been low. You know, let's bring Pelletary up here. Let's, let's bring one of them up here, and let's ask that question. And you tell me if I'm wrong, as far as, I'm going to stay with brush, because I think brush is very important to people. We don't have, for people watching, we don't have a full-time brush crew. We do not have that. Why? Because it was expense. Why? Because you guys do a good job. You do a good job. But, correct me if I'm wrong, you can't tell people when to trim their trees or when to do their bushes. And if people are off and take vacation, that three percent's going to go right out the window.
Right.
Because all of a sudden, you get people doing it.
You can't predict the storms. And, and that's when having those additional collections could benefit, because you just don't know when the storms are going to come. And it puts them closer together than once every three weeks. And we find that, every year is different. It's like when the leaves fall, you can't predict when the leaves fall. Last year, in one municipality, it took us two weeks to do that thing, because it was, the bags were frozen to the ground. Because not only did it freeze, but it had rain on it. It was just a miserable mess. And you can't, you just can't predict that kind of thing.
All right. Any further, Dorothy?
I think I'm going to ask, if you guys are looking at two last brush collections, what dates would you pick or how would you rearrange the schedule?
I think Claudia already did that on a proposed calendar that she submitted, and...
Should be in the packet.
Yeah, that's in your packet.
Yeah.
Does someone know what the dates were? Or?
Actually, I might have it here.
I didn't look that closely.
It, I, I believe it, it's, it just spreads things out a little bit throughout the year.
I think there would be a collection every three weeks.
Yeah.
Is the way that she timed it. So it'd still be two last collections, but the timing was once every three weeks approximately.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I always just, I just brought up the calendar for this year. I've got it taped to my refrigerator, and I do things based on what the calendar says is coming up. I don't know how many people have it memorized when, when to expect the next one. So if the calendar says it's every three weeks, I would think that people would adapt to that relatively well.
Anything else, or do you want to vote on this amendment? All right. Seeing nothing else, this amendment, so we're just again voting on amendment, and it is to change from the, it's twelve in the proposal back to fourteen, which it has traditionally been. So if you would like to move it back to fourteen, say aye. If you don't, say nay. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? All right. I believe the ayes have that. I heard something about unlimited recycling. Does someone want to make a motion to, no one has added unlimited recycling back. I don't know if you want to do that or not. Dan, do you want to?
It does add, excuse me, just for your, you know, so we did in the finance committee. So the cost for the bulk was nine dollars. The cost for the twelve to fourteen was like two and a half dollars. And then, so, so you take nine minus two and a half, and then you're at six and a half. However, then the cost for unlimited recycling is twelve. So you're actually increasing the overall cost by six, six and a half, roughly, if you go forward with unlimited. I like unlimited, because the bags, you know, we're kind of worried about the three fifty-dollar, three dollar and fifty cent bags. But we leaned that way. We could go either way, I'd say. We leaned that way. But I, we could leave it alone, too, if you don't want to have a big discussion.
So...
Right now, there's limitations on how much recycling you can do under this proposal. Currently, the city has unlimited recycling. And so we changed it to back to unlimited, but there's an additional cost. And we were sort of on the fence, but we kind of put it in there, but I don't know if I'll make a motion. I'm, I'm comfortable sort of either way. I like where it's at. I'm, I'm comfortable what you've done, in my view, but just for your information, those are the costs.
And if I remember right, for a charge, people can upgrade to the bigger recycling container, just like a one-time charge, if you don't have the big one. I have the big one, which I don't always fill up, but... So does someone want to make a motion to change it back to unlimited? Tom?
For finance, I thought you did, Dan. Isn't that what you said, stated? I'm sorry.
We did, but we're going item by item, I guess. No, we're just, we did in finance, so finances, what we did has unlimited, but they're going through each of the three items that were under consideration.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to leave it the way it was.
So you want to motion to back to unlimited, okay? Is there a second?
No.
All right. Second by Julia. So another discussion on that. Dorothy?
And the point that I heard being made about unlimited recycling, and I want to ask these guys, was people, when, when their trash is full, they take their excess trash and throw it in recycling? How much does that happen?
We've seen an increase in the contamination at our facility from three to five percent when we opened our facility to running to fifteen to sixteen, eighteen percent some weeks in, in additional. And so we think a lot of that is from that.
You think there's some retraining that needs to be done?
Continuously, and we're, we've, through Fact TV, fortunately, too, we've, we have plenty of videos that we're putting out there, educating the folks on recycling tips, and just in a seven-minute video of our, our plant, just to see how things are sorted, just to give them an idea of, of how things happen.
And taped up next to the calendar, I've got the list of what can be recycled, and I have a picture of the hand sorting station. And I say, "This is why we don't want to put trash in."
Right.
Because those people in un-air-conditioned, unheated facility have to sort through whatever it is you put in that container. And if you're putting in your trash, they have to hand sort that out of the stream.
All right. Now, Sarah?
And that was exactly RCC's concern. It's just that if you have this unlimited option available, which I guess as I drive through, I don't, I don't know if that is widely known by residents, that you can put out unlimited recycling. But it is that if you could have that option, the contamination was definitely a concern that option, the contamination was definitely a concern of ours, where we want to make sure that our recycled goods are uniquely used or in the recycling bucket, and we thought that with the education standpoint, we could encourage the use of the cardboard drop-off point, because I know in finance, there was a discussion about how cardboard is becoming so common with deliveries, which definitely understand, but that the drop-off point is fantastic then, and then you could save that space within your recycling container.
All right, further comments on the unlimited recycling? All right, then, for this one, again, it's just amending the main resolution, an aye-vote means that you want to switch back to unlimited recycling, no says you want to keep what was proposed, which is just, you got your bin, you have to pay extra if you want an extra bag. So, all in favor of unlimited recycling, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Uh, let's do a roll call, that was close enough, I think I know a bit.
Alder Radafarada?
Yes.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Schroeder?
No.
Alder Scott?
No.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Four to three.
All right, so that passes for unlimited recycling then. All right, so back to the main motion, it's amended now, so that we do not have the two-bulk pickups, we are back to fourteen collections, that's twelve, and we do have unlimited recycling. All right, I think we probably talked about it enough, but if someone wants to, they can say more. Tom?
From what Pelletary has seen in, is there anything you want to tell us before we vote on this?
It's been an honor to serve you guys, I mean, seriously, it has, and this is wonderful, I just wish more people could see this and see the seriousness that you folks take in all this, because it is truly wonderful, and that's what I'd like to say.
If you do tape this, make sure you pay us. Make sure you pay us.
All right, so, I don't, hopefully we don't need a roll call, we'll try and do it without a roll call, so, all in favor of approving the resolution with all the amendments, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Abstentions? All right, that is approved, as amended, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for RCC?
Can I add another note?
Sure.
I wanted to, because some, someone recently said something about what is being recycled isn't being recycled as much as we think, I wanted to point to EcoStar, that's on PD, just east of Verona Road, that takes, I don't know if it's just from Pelletary, or if they get all the pet, the water bottle plastic from other places, and they completely recycle it from the water bottle to a new product ready for use. They do do tours, so if people haven't had a chance to check that place out, it's a great thing that's happening here in Pittsburgh.
All right, anything else, Sarah?
Nothing for me.
All right, moving along, transportation and transit?
No report.
Uh, Seda?
Uh, Seda, our last meeting was a joint meeting with Plan Commission, and we discussed the, the Fish Hatch, the North Fish Hatch Road vision, it was a presentation from Bandewell, so.
All right, yep. Uh, Eagan Rolfairs, Janelle's not here, is there anything you know about that?
No, not at this point.
All right, EMS, I know they actually didn't have a meeting this month, but October is their joint meeting, which all of you are invited to, I think it's the seventh, sixteenth, whatever Thursday is, it's the third Thursday of the month.
Yeah, not even, not just invited, but encouraged to attend, we need a quorum. We've rarely had a quorum, I think last year was the first year.
The first one last year, yeah, yeah. Can you send, can you ask Lisa to send us a reminder in our outlook, so?
I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Excellent, all right, Bicycle Committee?
We are meeting October fifteenth.
All right, Tree Advisory Committee?
They ended up meeting without me, September twelfth, what they worked on was creating a bulleted list of thoughts to talk about as part of the comp plan, and that will get further consideration in the October third meeting.
All right, great. Landmark, Shannon?
Until November.
All right, finance, Tom?
Finance, tonight we had one person missing, as far as the committee goes, the other two were present, the first one of bills, and there's three resolutions, the first one's approval of bills, check numbers is eleven ninety-six oh three through eleven ninety-six sixty-eight, they're dated nine one nineteen through nine fifteen nineteen. The total for the city is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. There's no questions, I'm going to keep moving.
Sounds good.
Next will be resolutions, the first one is resolution, it's our one fifty-eight dash nineteen, authorizing for twenty nineteen Dane County, the Pittsburgh Enhance Payment this...
Second.
Oh, all right.
I need a motion.
All right, motion by Tom, something by Dan, what's going on with this time?
This is, uh, this was payment of Dane County for the nine-one-one, et cetera, isn't it?
Yeah, it's actually for improvements that were made to the system during the last year, so each entity that's a part of Dane Com, it's split based on assessed valuation.
This is our sheriff.
Yep, yeah, we really don't have a whole lot to say in.
No.
Any other questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, all right, next one, Tom?
The next one's resolution, our one ninety-one fifty-nine dash nineteen authorization for the twenty nineteen Dane Comp operating in maintenance cost, this is for the nine, for the nine-one-one center, et cetera, in reference to our cost, I did ask the clerk...
So wait, hold on, Tom, does that motion?
Motion.
All right, that's saying, all right, go ahead.
My fault. Uh, this is nine-one-one center basically, and Misty's going to get back to me, but also I was curious with the cost, if it went up from last year, do you know, Pat?
It did go up slightly.
Um, not anything unexpected, I believe it's under three percent, but we can get you the exact numbers. And again, this is divided equally among the municipalities, and it's based on assessed valuation, I know they're looking at in the future of basing it on number of calls, but that hasn't happened yet.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, next one, Tom?
Last one is resolution, our one sixty, one sixty-one dash nineteen, accepting contract with Morgan Murphy Media Channel Three Thousand to livestream City of Pittsburgh Fact content. I'll move that.
All right, is there a second? Something by Julia, and you want to tell us about this at all?
This is interesting, but basically what this one is, is so that you can streamline the athletic, um, sports, like in Verona, and people can actually see it, I know Sun Prairie does that now, the other day I looked at Sun Prairie in Verona, the game was on TV, and this is similar, it's just sports though, it's not like city council or anything, to my knowledge, unless I'm wrong, I believe it's just sports.
Right.
Am I correct?
Yep.
And that's what this one's about.
Yeah, it's a partnership where we get paid a little bit of money by Channel Three Thousand by doing the, going to the games and actually doing the video for it and showing it online, Julia?
Yeah, I don't know if in finance you discuss this, but here it says that it's six hundred dollars, but it's six hundred dollars per what? It's per year, per a couple of games, what it is, do you know that?
It's for the school year.
Ah, for the school year.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe it should be more, I don't know, I didn't see.
I know that we can also have the opportunity to sell some advertising while those, while someone looks at those online, we can sell some advertising, and we get all that money as well. Dan?
It's supposed to pay for itself, because we can sell advertising, advertisements, so it's supposed to be a negligible cost.
And provide a service for our residents.
For our, our football fans and...
Well, it's for all sports, not just football, I believe it's mainly Verona and west. Oregon, I know, does a lot of stuff on their own, actually.
Yeah, right now it's just Verona. We haven't received an agreement with Madison because they wanted to actually charge us to provide the broadcasting.
What?
Yes. So we, we passed on that.
Yeah, all right, Dorothy?
On point seven, talking about the advertising, it says, um...
Oh, yeah.
Basically shall not advertise any political announcement, advertising liquor, malt spirits, or tobacco. What I wanted to ask is if we wanted to talk about adding language in there related to vaping, or, I think CBD is completely legal, but I'd love to put in adult entertainment in general, as something that they're not allowed to put advertisements on.
Yeah, we're already currently banned per our agreement, our charter through the state, that there's only certain things we can put on local community channels, and excludes all those things you just mentioned.
Well, this is talking about them using our material on Channel Three Thousand, correct?
That's correct, but it would be, it would be all the information provided by us, so we do have that covered, it wouldn't hurt for you to add that in the resolution if you so choose, but it's already covered.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask what kind of either Fact TV or Pittsburgh branding we get as part of that? Do we get the Fact TV logo or Pittsburgh logo on the stream?
Uh, it's something I can ask.
If we're just getting six hundred bucks, I would like it to be branded more as being provided by Pittsburgh.
Great, and I know that if you have any interest in being a play-by-play person and doing the announcing, that Jeremy is looking for volunteers for various sports, so if there's a sport that you have a passion for, he is looking for...
Now Jake should still be here.
So. Any other questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving the resolution, our one sixty-one nineteen, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, anything else, Tom? All right, personnel?
Yes, we met last week, and I need approval of ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash oh twenty-four, updating Economic Development Coordinator, Engineer, Director of Public Works, and zoning administrator planner, ordinance by repealing the section eight dash one zero seven E, and amending eight dash one zero eight D, and eight dash one one five C of Pittsburgh General Code of Ordinance. It was approved in personnel...
Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Something by, I'll give it to Ann, since she's on personnel. What's going on, Julia?
So that one is you for the, for the elders, fellow elders, that you remember at the beginning of the year, we tried to change the, the Public Works Director and combine with the zoning, and have like an assistant administrator, and then we didn't do it, so what we're doing now is reverting to the previous reporting structure, you know, so we are changing back to what it was.
Yeah, just doing some cleanup in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's cleaned up because we approved it way back, and now we need, nothing happened, and we're going back, so that one is, that's it.
Excellent, Dan?
So, and I, no problem with that at all, I just would ask, I guess from the Personnel Committee or Pat, there's no desire then to appoint a new assistant administrator, do you think it's better with the current structure?
Yeah, given the, some challenges we had in the recruiting arena, along with the indifference of staff to take on the role of the Assistant City Administrator, we believed going back to the original structure was most beneficial.
Okay.
All right, anything further? All right, all in favor of this change, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, anything else on personnel? Anything on public safety? All right, Mayor's report, Alder's report, I just had a few things, one, you should know, you got an email that my budget is out, so take a look at that, Pat mentioned Finance Committee meetings coming up next week, but that is out there and on the website for anyone to take a look at. Also, last Friday, I hope I don't steal this from someone, but Hop House had their groundbreaking, and that was a very exciting event, a number of you were there for that, I know they're very excited about the new facility as well, and then I also had gone to the new Blackhawk Church, had a, like kind of a open house type thing, it's still a few months away, a few months away from being finished, but I got to see where they're at so far, and that's a very impressive building as well, so, I'll start with Sarah, and go that way.
Sure, so just an update that the construction is still occurring between Lacy and East Sherrill, and kind of getting some feedback that Lacy's definitely picked up some traffic, that it's busy, went to the senior Saturday's fortieth anniversary party last Thursday, which that was a fun event, had a lot going on, and then the last update was just the phase three of Fayey Fields is under construction.
All right, Shannon? Any report?
Nope.
All right, Tom?
I, two things, one, I continue to have a lot of phone calls about traffic in the city as far as complaints, and it's, I don't think it, I think it's a little of everything, not only our, outside residents as well, I'll just make that comment, I don't think it's all ours, but, the other thing is, if you go down Irish Lane, people for Hillside Heights, I'm happy to report, I'm not sure, but it looks like it's done, the pond that was added, and that's to help in the flooding in that area, it's, it was long in coming, I know Hartman and myself put that in the budget in the past, and what that does is hopefully help the flooding in that area, that's what it's all about, I'll just leave it at that, that's all I have.
All right, Dorothy?
I was trying to do a quick look up on the time, on October third in the evening, we're doing a McKee Road for the neighborhoods around the area of McKee and Seminole Highway to meet with Bill Balky and others about the plan, so we did get them to mail out, usually they only mail to owners, property owners and business, and homeowners, but I helped them put together a list of renters that live on that, they front right onto McKee, so they're going to be very impacted and would not have gotten notification from the city in its usual processes, so we need to be sure that we take care of our renters better in some ways.
Great, thank you, Ann? All right, Julia?
So, so I was planning to mention what Dorothy mentioned, because it's part of District Two, too. The other thing I want to mention, I received a couple of calls from some neighbors that they are, they want to know what happened with the home inside in District Two, and they are concerned about, they want to have a follow-up what happened in Pembroke in the summer, a couple of trying to, you know, robbery attempt, so I think people in my district, in the area where we never have any issue with safety, and they are concerned, so I talked to the chief, and we are planning to do like eventually a safety forum, to talk to the neighbor when we have, you know, some answers, because now we don't have answers, so, but this is a concern that...
All right, great, Dan?
I'll just report that the light that I had long worked on having installed in Village of Devon Green has been installed, and so thank you to the Department of Public Works and to Misty for assisting with that, also to former Mayor Gonzalez for including that in his budget, and to Julia for her advocacy, it was District Two, it's a District Two project, so glad to get that done.
All right, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, really tomorrow night, we're talking a lot about comprehensive plans, so I'm not going to really talk a lot tonight, but a number of things we're talking about, it's the meetings that we're having, I know the dates were sent out earlier today, so you know when those neighborhood meetings are, it's going over some, I think even one of the chapters, the structure as well, and then, just because I know there's a lot of interest about Edgewood College and that whole area, and the process, you know, steps, I think that we're also going to have some more information on that as we go forward, and continue to just make sure everyone's updated on that, so, a lot more tomorrow night. Going on to new business, direct referrals, is this something someone in Public Works wants to do a motion on?
Sure. A motion to approve resolution, our one sixty-two dash nineteen, acceptance of deed for on lot eleven, for the Nine Springs plot, for the purpose of dedication as a public street for extension of Green Marketplace and East Sherrill Parkway.
All right, so that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, something by Ann, Pat, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, basically you have the resolution in front of you in your packet, I wanted to note some changes to that document that have been recommended by our city attorney, it's, they're fairly... It's, they're fairly straightforward. The first of which is, you'll notice in, in the title of the resolution, it was acceptance of quick claim deed. So wherever quick claim deed is noted in this document, it, quick claim should be struck, and deed should just be left alone. So it's actually going to end up being a warranty deed, but instead of adding something, we just omitted quick claim throughout the document. And then lastly, and the last, um, be it further resolved, uh, city, our city attorney recommended the act, uh, addition of subject to technical corrections by the city attorney. So I would request that somebody, uh, make that amendment as stated.
Is there a motion to amend as stated?
So moved.
And a second, seconded by Dorothy? All right. So, and did Public Works approve?
It did.
And then Plan Commission approved as well. Uh, so first we have to vote on the amendment. So you vote, an "aye" is to accept the changes recommended by the city attorney that Pat just read off. So all in favor of accepting those amendments, say "aye."
Aye.
All right. And nays? Anyone nay? All right. So the amendment is approved. Any further questions on this item at all?
Sinley.
Seeing none. All in favor of approving as amended, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Uh, does someone on finance want to do the second one?
This is resolution, resolution, our one sixty-six dash nineteen, amending the twenty-nineteen capital projects for the TID four budget. This is the Uptown Improvements. And I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Something by Dan. And did Finance approve?
Finance did.
All right. And?
The short version of this is, um, it was in a couple of different segments that we put this together, and this is the ending part of it. Um, staff felt it was better to, um, do one that they had the answers to more or less, and do the second part now. That sound right, Pat, or?
Yeah, that's...
That's correct. There's several, there's several road additions that are going in this fall and into the spring, uh, out in Uptown along with the railroad crossing, and
we just wanted to combine it into all one resolution. Yeah.
All right. Julia, yeah?
So we're talking about six-hundred-thousand-dollar addition, so we are going to assess some of these, we are going to recuperate some of this money?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's either going to be financed through TID or, uh, assessment to the benefiting property owners.
So do we know how much is each? I don't know. Is there?
Uh, yeah, it's three hundred.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, it's broken down. Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Further questions? Seeing none then. All in favor of resolution, our one sixty-six nineteen, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. That passes unanimously. Needed two-thirds. Perfect. All right. Then, nothing else on the agenda. Announcements tomorrow is coming to the hole. Uh, Dorothy is chairing, I believe.
Yeah, fir- first hour will be, um, uh, DA Ishmael Azan will be here, along with a couple of the staff from the Juvenile Jail, the Juvenile Reception Center, um, and Joe Maldonado, who is, um, co-owner of the Luna's Grocery Store, but also works for the United Way, has been working, um, with a lot of kids, doing a mentorship program. And he's going to, I, I picked him up, um, having talked to, uh, the county budget about the possibility of getting some funding for his program through the county. And I'm not proposing anything for the city related to that, but I'd like to, uh, give that to us to think about what the possibilities might be for helping these kids in productive ways, rather than just feeling like we need to lock them up and throw away the key, which is darn expensive for the rest of their life.
Yeah. Tom?
Thanks, Dorothy. I, I, I just had two things, um, non-related. One, first one is if we have the meeting tomorrow night with the planners, um, can I just make a suggestion to staff and mayor in reference to having the, just a thought, having the appropriate people there tomorrow night, if it's a city attorney, if it's, um, different departments, that, um, between the planners in this body, if we have questions, I want them answered. That's all I'm saying. Second thing is, um, it's on a sadder note, but I just want your opinion on it, if I could, the other seven of you and the mayor. And Dorothy, I'm going to put this on you a little bit. Um, you can talk to the sheriff. Years ago, a sheriff's deputy from Dane County lost his life at the corner of PD and Verona Road. What happened, it was a high-speed chase. He was on a chase, and he was chasing a vehicle. He slid through the intersection, and I'll just say a northbound car on Verona Road killed him. Hit the side of his squad car and killed him instantly. Um, with the new road going in, um, and I'm not sure we can even do this. I haven't talked to the Secretary of the DOT, but could there be a plaque put on that bridge in reference to the officer that was killed in the line of duty? Um, I know the secretary, um, Transportation Secretary, but, um, I did call the sheriff, and I didn't get a call back. And, um, I just thought, we're just talking something simple, don't get me wrong, something simple, um, to be put on the bridge right at that intersection. That's it. I'm not talking about a, um, for people watching, I'm not talking about a candle. I'm not talking about [laughing]. I'll get calls on this. I'm not talking about anything like that, just a plaque. That, that's all I'm referring to. And, um, he, I, I don't remember, I'm kind of guessing. I think he was probably an eighteen, twenty-year veteran that was killed. And, um, if that's possible, um, to do that.
Yeah, if Pat could...
We can, yeah, we can ask a question.
Ask that, that'd be great.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any other announcements at all? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. All in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. See you tomorrow night.